Millville.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Erin Binaco, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
And Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you. No student reps tonight, so we will continue. We're going to take our agenda out of order. We do have our public hearing this evening for our FY24 budget, but we will move things around a little bit and start with the report of the superintendent, Portrait of a Graduate update.
Perfect. So, good evening, everybody. Since we have a little one in the audience, we thought it might be helpful to take the agenda items in a different order so that the Portrait of a Graduate presenters can share with the school committee the great work that they have done and then get our little future charger maybe home to bed soon. So if our Portrait of a Graduate team wants to join us up front and up at the table, and I will bring the clicker over to you. And so, the school committee is aware, we actually have a cross section of a couple of teams with us this evening. We have members of our Portrait of a Graduate team and Blueprint 2.0 team that's really working on the implementation and the monitoring of our district blueprint, but we also have members of our school-based instructional leadership team, which we're super thrilled to have all of you here tonight and the great work that you do each and every day is definitely not going unnoticed, for sure. So, I'll turn it over to you if you want to do introductions, and we have the slide deck in front of us. And there's the clicker there. So, welcome.
So, I'm Hillary Roberge, part of the ILT at the high school. So for our outcomes today, we're hoping to provide an update on the progress made to ensure alignment for all of our schools in the district with our Portrait of a Graduate. And we also want to share some updates and next steps regarding like rollout and really sticking with our Portrait of a Graduate and fidelity.
And I'm Emily Turgen. I am part of the ILT team representing the middle school. So, kind of looking at this timeline, we started the school year with the completed at the high school level Portrait of a Graduate and a draft at the complex level, and then by December, all the schools had their draft written, ready to go for the rest of the district. And then all the members from all the different schools met together in February just to align the documents, make sure everything worked from the little ones to the end, and that kind of results into the documents that we're presenting tonight.
So for our high school Portrait of a Graduate, this has kind of been like fairly set in stone for quite some time now. If you know Jill, she's like the poster child for Portrait of a Graduate. She probably has like t-shirts made already for it. So, we have our five main pillars with character, citizenship, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking that we're sticking with throughout the entire district. We really tried to make the language really accessible for our students. That way, it's not just for teachers, but it's for our students as well, so when they're reading it, they can understand it in full. So, we're already doing a lot of these things in our classroom with both character and citizenship. We run our advisory program every single month, and within that advisory program, there's a lot of collaboration. We've done pumpkins, the carving competition, we've done the door decorating competitions. We also have senior leaders who take part in the freshman advisories. I personally have some senior leaders that actually, they run the whole thing. So when they're in the room with me, they're engaging with the discussion, so they're really taking a lot of that responsibility as seniors, which is great to see. With our collaboration, this year in particular, it's a focus. We're doing a lot with, we're actually printing out the collaboration school-wide rubric that we've created, and each teacher will have laminated copies. So anytime we're doing class discussions, the kids are in groups doing activities or lessons or projects, they'll have a copy right on their desk so they know exactly what their expectations are working in those groups in that collaborative manner. For communication, we focused on this a lot last year with the ACE writing strategy. I know our middle school does that as well. It's really, it's paid dividends. We saw with MCAS last year how it really helped a lot of, especially our lower-level students with their writing, the ones who were struggling most, found this really helpful in terms of just like a concrete strategy for them to help them with composing their writing. And then with critical thinking, that's like across the board, we do it every day in every classroom. We've done with our authentic assessments, the kids always have choice in terms of how are they going to present their findings, whether it's they're creating their own podcast or research project, or composing their own essays or arguments. So, we're really already trying to implement all of these pillars into our daily lives at the high school.
All right. So, at the middle school level, because we are really kind of more different, they are leading the way for us. So we had our eighth graders, when we're first doing the draft of it, really look at both that high school and the elementary to help bridge that gap for us of what does it look like. So we had some of the students get to be involved in looking at what that should look like, same thing with the language, using it so it was user-friendly and not just for the teachers. With that said, by the end of March, we have, we'll have all of the grade levels, we'll have different meetings, and at that point, what we'll be doing is doing kind of like a deep dive into what does the Portrait of a Graduate look like at the middle school level so that all the students are really aware of what does it look like, what does it sound like, as well as having an idea of doing an overview of the whole district. So they realize we're not just these middle school, we are a district of one, we're all on the same path and the same journey. So if they have some younger siblings or older siblings, they realize they're on the same journey with me. So that's what we'd like to get done by the end of March. For the rest of the year, to kind of help implement each of the five different pillars, each of the months, we're going to focus on one in particular. And actually, we have it. So that I have in April, we're going to be focusing on citizenship and critical thinking. In May is going to be character and collaboration, and then June is going to be on communication. So that is going to be kind of the focus, practicing, showing what does it look like, but also, we have a ticket system. So when somebody sees, an adult sees a student in action embodying that character, whichever of the pillars we have, they'll earn a ticket, and then we're going to have a drawing for them. And as an incentive for the teachers to kind of keep it in the forefront of their mind so that they're thinking about it as well, is they also, they get to put it in a drawing as well for if they get to hand them out. And with that ticket system, as I mentioned, it's kind of really showing in the moment while they're doing that. And then also, we are going to be displaying, so it's not just said, but it's also every single classroom will have the middle school roadmap and then up in their, displayed in their room, and then we're going to have out in the lobby, we're going to have the whole roadmap for the whole district's Portrait of Graduates. So when you kind of come in, you can see it, you're coming into the library, you can see it, and it's going to end with a couple of the purple and white graduation caps. So we'll have that displayed, so it's present.
So, at the complex, we were really fortunate that many members of our ILT were already familiar with the POG. So when the high school began to roll it out, we jumped on board right away. I want to say it was like late spring last year, we started thinking about what would this look like at our grade levels. So right away, we just thought about the way that we already conduct, you know, who our students are and their contribution basically to school, and we thought the best way to do this would be with ICANN statements, so that they knew that each one of these was a goal that they were working towards and that they knew that they kind of had that self-mastery. But then, because learning walks are so important to us and being able to see other classrooms when we went in and we're observing, that we're able to see these things in action. So when you look at our POG, you can see that each one is represented as an ICANN statement. And then the way that those were created were, we looked at the high school's model for us, we pulled out the words that really stood out to us, and we made sure that that kind of academic language was broken down into something that was a little bit more student-friendly and a little bit more age-appropriate. In terms of the visual representations, we have the banners in the school, really focusing on the five Cs, posters within the classrooms, but just making sure that it's kind of like a living, breathing document, that the kids are familiar with it, that they know what it was. And we kept thinking like, where else can we go with this? So I want to say it was midsummer. I'll let Grace continue on where we went from there.
Yeah, so we wanted to get the kids involved in the Portrait of a Graduate, and I think at an elementary level, that can be trickier because some of the statements were a little bit more wordy. So we do what's called Citizen of the Month, and instead of just picking a random quality that we're looking for in Citizen of the Month, we pulled the Portrait of a Graduate pillar. And then when the weekly newsletters are sent out, parents are made aware of the characteristics that we're looking for, teachers are aware, students are aware, so that at the end of the month, when, you know, students have already identified these ICANN statements, the teachers, all the teachers, both classrooms, special ed specialists, all choose someone who they think have embodied the characteristics of that Portrait of a Graduate pillar, and then they're recognized, which I think is a great way to get the kids involved in something that, you know, could easily be overlooked for a nine, 10, 11-year-old at the upper elementary age.
And then the way that we've kind of made them understand too, I think, is like, we've talked to them about what each one of these traits mean, and then going back to like that original concept of like, no matter where they go, whether they're going to, we say it all the time, college, career, community, you need these skills to be able to thrive so they understand why these are important, even at that young level, especially the communication part of it and the collaboration, they've just become amazing with discourse because of it.
Right. At the early elementary level at Millville, we started in the fall with our Portrait of a Graduate. We took the high school's Portrait of a Graduate as well as the complex, and we had to align it, keeping in mind that we are getting these students at sometimes three, four, five years old, so we are building the foundation for the rest of the Portrait of a Graduate to be built upon. So, we started in our ILT groups, and we were going through each pillar, aligning it with what would be suitable and appropriate for three to five-year-olds. And then we went to staff, at a staff meeting to collect feedback from the staff. We took the feedback back to ILT, made some adjustments, and then we took it to the district ILT, got their feedback, and made the adjustments from there. And then to implement our Portrait of a Graduate, we, as well as the complex, are doing a Student of the Month with each pillar of the Portrait of the Graduate. That's why we have months on our Portrait of the Graduate. So each month, highlighting one of the pillars, not only classroom teachers, but staff as well, can pick a student who embodies that pillar. And then at the end of the month, the Student of the Month is announced, and they get to have ice cream with the principal as a reward for demonstrating that they have these characteristics. As well as every month, literature is going home to the parents with book recommendations for them to read to their students, so that way, at home, parents are understanding what the Portrait of a Graduate means to their child. So, we are just helping our three, four, five, six, seven-year-olds really develop that strong foundation of what it means to have character, to be a citizen, collaborate, communicate, and to critically think, so that way it carries them throughout the rest of their journey here.
So these are basically our next steps. Where would we go from here to make sure that it's happening, you know, ongoing, that it doesn't end now that the, you know, the work has been done in putting this together? So, right now, all schools are continuing to create measures for success. So how do you know that this is happening? When you enter any one of these schools, you know, we can have a signage, we can say that it's happening, but what does it actually look for in the classroom? And creating working rubrics and like look-for documents so that if anybody, get upset him, if anybody came in, I know.
He doesn't like those rubrics, Danielle.
If anybody came into the school, what would they, how would they know that it's happening? So how could they identify that, you know, the students are striving for this? And not only that, but the teachers are facilitating it within the classroom, because obviously, it's not just the students, it's for us as well. At the complex, we are in the stage of creating our look-for rubric. I know the high school, I think, in a meeting the other day, they had said that they have two of the rubrics already done, they're moving forward, so we're jumping on board with that. And we really want to see that the implementation is, I can't say enough, that it's not just the students, but it's the staff also. And then, the other thing too, is we want to continue with the PD as it says, but what does that look for? Like, what do you need in order for this to happen? And again, I can mainly speak for our school, but we really think that that like conceptual understanding, the critical thinking, like that's so important, it can't just be the content that you're teaching. Students have to really understand it so that they, as they move up through the grades, they know that their education is building upon this and that they can effectively communicate their ideas, their reasoning, collaborate with others, have that discourse, this is what we talked about, respectfully disagree, they need all of that. So, just giving the PD to the teachers so we know how to be successful in teaching them.
Awesome.
Questions?
Any questions?
Any questions? I guess my question would be, like, if there is one, what is the biggest challenge in getting this aligned and to be what it looks like today?
Can I start? Okay. So one of the things, just being on various committees, is I think initially what was a hurdle was like that vertical understanding, because when you're not working in, you know, an early ed building, or you're in a middle school and you're not seeing what's happening in our school, you don't really have an understanding of what's developmentally appropriate for the students. So like some things that were initially said were, you know, are they capable of this? Like, that was one of the questions that came up, are students capable of civil discourse? So we said, yes, come see it happen, like it happens every day. So showing, like having the schools be able to come to one another, see, and then that's another pathway that we're hoping to do, that more vertical alignment, more vertical walkthroughs and learning walks will happen, so you know that it is happening and setting that kind of high level of expectation, right? Because that's why we're doing this, so that we have a really high level of expectation that starts at the earliest stage and can continue all the way through. So I think vertical alignment was really difficult initially.
And I, just to kind of piggyback on that, we did have that time that, when we met in February, to really come together as a district ILT and have those conversations to talk about, okay, look at yours, look at mine, asking really good, nitty-gritty questions of each other, I think that helped really solidify where we are, because we had a better understanding of what they're doing, what does that look like, how are you getting there? So how can we piggyback on that to make sure it's continuing to go in a fluid motion?
I think what you just said was so important is, what does that look like? Like really having something that you can identify what that looks like in action, so then that way you can emulate it at every level.
I think that same question of like, what does that look like when we're like officially presenting this to our own faculty, our own staff? You know, what does that look like in your classroom, kind of thing? Because for a lot of them, it could be like a stressor of, you know, are we doing this? But a lot of them are already doing a lot of these things in their classroom, but it's just that conversation of what does it actually look like?
Right. And again, it turns into empowering teachers, like you're already doing this, this is what it is, and it's, that's how you get the buy-in. I think that that was another piece, the buy-in from everybody to understand like, this isn't going away, this is what we believe in, this is our living, breathing document.
Yeah. So is there anything you need from us to keep the momentum, I guess? And the, you know, do you think these, for example, the lower, do you think it will continue to be Student of the Month, you know, geared towards it? And I'm getting yeses from all of you, so.
I love the ice cream once a month. I'm not.
It's a great motivator for students, yeah.
And principal.
Yeah, right. I asked, one other thing, the community part of it, I think that that's where we're trying to tie it in right now, is figuring out like, community means us as a school community, but I think we're looking for ways to tie in the external, I don't want to say external, because it's still part of the community, but outside of the schools, how do we draw them in? I think that that's something that I hear a lot at the meetings, is really making this like a community-wide venture.
And getting the parents involved as well. That I think that the parents really need to know what this is and why we are implementing it, and how it continues throughout their child's entire schooling in the district.
Actually, one question I was asked the kids when they're looking at ice cream. So what was this month's, what was this month's trait? And how do you think you showed this? And they will tell me what they did, and everything fits under what their, the trait is for the month. So that's been really great to watch them kind of think about what they did as a student to show this. And that's from K all the way through to.
But it's a great foundation, right? Because they're going to take that with them through the other buildings and see it in different ways, too. It would, it's great to see, and to see it in each level, too. I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Nope, that's okay. So I was just wondering, so you're developing rubrics across the span of grade levels, who will be using, who will be assessing? You know, like, how often are we assessing to see if what the plan is actually being executed, you know, and gain is being made? So that's my first question. And then the second question is, the teacher in me, when we're talking about this document and asking teachers for buy-in, because we're asked for lots of buy-in for lots of things, is it like sort of, is the expectation that things are streamlined so it's not like another lesson? Like, fit this in, it's sort of, what's the thought on that? Like, is it, is the expectation that it's streamlined in?
I think, so the second part is, at least at the middle school level, like when we're having discussions, we, in our PLC meetings, talking about how can we not add one more thing, looking at it as, naturally embedding it in. So when you're looking at what the five pillars are, I think especially, I mean, the critical thinking is an easy one, I mean, that's kind of built right into what we're doing, but when you're looking at that character, when you're looking at that citizenship, I think it's really just, most of the time, you're doing it. So it's embedding it right in the moment, recognizing it when it's happening. So I think when we, when we looked at it, it was more about not trying to force something or not to make it something extra, rather, look at what are we doing? And as you mentioned, we're doing most of it all the time, but how do we bring kind of attention to it more to make it more at that forefront so that there, it's talked about? And it's not, same reason why we're kind of focusing on each of those months, similar to what the elementary is, it's so we can say, what did you do? What does this look like? So that it's talked about, not just forgotten or an extra thing. I think that was, at least at the middle school level, when we, at our PLCs, when we discussed it, that's how we looked at it.
And the only thing that I would add to that is like, we've been saying a lot over the past few years that like you're teaching programs to fidelity. I think that this has given teachers back a little bit more freedom in some ways, because when that natural classroom discussion happens and the students are really talking about what they're learning and engaging in conversation, you're not stopping and, you know, worried about your timeline, like you're realizing the value and having these important conversations and for them to share their thoughts and their ideas with one another, and you feel good, like you let that go and you let that happen organically, and they've just like truly started to embody these because we're more receptive to letting that happen, because we know that this is what we believe in.
And Danielle, again, you know, focusing on the complex, we so focus on the five Cs. Danielle, give them that example that you told me to embrace earlier.
So we, so I have a little, I have a student, wonderful, so we're in wonders right now, we're reading biography, so we're reading Rosa Parks. So, it's only like six pages long, it has gotten me, in the past two days, I've gotten through three pages, because all they want to do is talk about it, and they keep tying it into the social studies piece. So I said, you know, this is amazing, when you guys get to the middle school next year, your teachers are going to love having you, like, talking like this. And then this little girl goes, Mrs. Keen, do you think that they, they know that we can have civil discourse like this? So you're using those words that I don't even realize that I'm saying them, but they're understanding and they're using it. And then like the other kids in the class are like, we're making an impact, like they're getting it at 10 years old, so it's happening.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Portrait of a Graduate?
Do we answer your first question?
No.
Okay, sorry.
In terms of like the creation of the rubrics themselves, so at the high school right now, we have two like school-wide rubrics, and therefore, communication from last year, we really worked on, and then collaboration for this year. And it was a full-on team effort, and it took a long time. So it was a combination of working during PLCs with just our departments, to faculty meetings, to bringing back to ILT, then going back to the faculty meeting for more revisions and input. So it definitely was a process. For our communication rubric last year, we used it a lot with our authentic assessments. So anytime a kid was doing an authentic assessment, they would utilize that rubric. And then with this year, when it comes to, you ask, you know, about how often are they using these rubrics? But the collaboration rubric, the ideal goal will be that once they're printed and laminated for all of our teachers, anytime our students are involved in a group activity, a group project, or just a group discussion, that's in front of them, it's on their desk, they can visibly see it. So as we're circulating, we're coming around the room, if, you know, a group's getting off task, we just point to a piece on, you know, which of these bullet points are we kind of veering away from, and we can redirect them in that way. So that one, we're hoping.
So it's classroom-based rubrics?
But the same rubric for every.
Every subject?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
A lot of incredible work.
Thank you.
The alignment so important.
Appreciate it.
Stay in the course.
We look forward to it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, so now we will return to the top of our agenda, which is the public hearing for FY24. So actually, I will need a motion to open our public hearing for FY24.
Second.
Moved by Tara, second by Tammy? Did I hear that? So open our public hearing, FY24 budget. Dr. DeFalco, you have a short presentation for us, and then we have many motions to go through.
Yes, I'm just going to grab the clicker up here.
Hillary, if you're a little one, you need to put him to sleep, you should stick around for it.
It might help soothe him right to bed. Little bedtime story. So good evening again, everybody, and just again, a thank you to our staff who are here tonight. Super appreciate all the work they're doing in that space to help align the work that's happening in our classrooms and our schools. And so, tonight, we're going to take a few minutes and just walk through material that I know our school committee and those of you at home, our friends and family at home that have been paying attention to our budget cycle, our budget process so far, have seen quite a few times. And so, some of this will move a little bit quicker through, just because, like I said, many of us have spent quite a bit of time with this material already. But again, to start our budget conversation, to start all of our conversations, we actually go back to what we just heard, which is a really good way to kind of tee off the discussion around our FY24 budget, because everything that we do financially is connected to our district improvement strategy. And we just heard from our staff in the classrooms exactly how this work is taking shape across our schools, which is just very impressive, to say the least. And so, our budget process has been certainly a lengthy one, that has involved dozens and dozens of conversations, hundreds of hours at this point, in terms of getting us to where we are tonight, and as we know, there's still a lot of work to do. But as far as the work to date, these conversations started in the summer with our town administrators, boards of selectmen in the fall, to talk about just how challenging fiscal 24 is going to be. And as we will see momentarily, that has proven to be true as far as the governor's budget and our initial numbers that have been released. As recent as this afternoon, Jill Pillagallrani and I were on a call reviewing the governor's budget, trying to say that quickly. And it's just so interesting what is happening across the Commonwealth as far as the wealthier districts that essentially put a significant amount of their own money into their school budget, but still have to have a certain amount of their budget funded by the state, I believe it is 20%, compared to our urban's and our high-poverty districts that, as discussed this afternoon, have more money than they can spend between the Student Opportunity Act and the ESAR dollars. And there were some discussions about how it will be very difficult to spend all of that money next year. And some of our regional friends were on the Zoom meeting as well. I will leave them nameless, but they were scratching their heads like we were, saying, how is this fair? And how is this possible? You have the wealthiest districts receiving larger percentage increases in their Chapter 70 than those of us that are in the middle, so to speak. Not high poverty, not urban, not super wealthy, and getting the least amount of increase in our Chapter 70 dollars, the least amount of state support. So we're going to talk about like specifically what those numbers mean, but I just wanted to include that because a lot of those conversations and those meetings and those discussions are not reflected here, but there's so much work that has happened in addition to what our formal process has been to date. Again, our enrollment, we are about 1468. This was as of October. Our demographics, I won't go through again, but we are approximately 50% free and reduced lunch, which is a significant amount. lunch, which is a significant amount, but not significant enough to get additional support and resources. I will say, I think the regional school systems have very much been left behind in the recent state formulas as it relates to Student Opportunity Act and Chapter 70 increases. A couple of data points just to highlight here that have been updated are four-year graduation rate. These are our adjusted rates, so these are students that started and ended together. So they were all together as freshmen. We have a 92% four-year graduation rate and a 2.2 drop rate. So you might recall, our graduation rate has decreased slightly. Last year, we were around 94 and our, but our drop rate has also decreased, down by about a half a percent. And so we just recently had a very productive meeting with the high school to delve into the specifics of these numbers, excuse me, in terms of looking at who the students are and the additional supports that we can put in place now for students at the high school to ensure that these numbers continue to improve. But we are making steady progress with that. And of course, our, our instructional data, we've seen multiple times as far as our MCAS results go. The grant update we've reviewed at length, we are excited to share that we did recently apply for a $350,000 Student Opportunity Act grant. It's kind of interesting that the, there is a opportunity for districts very much like Blackstone-Milville to apply for additional Student Opportunity Act dollars through a grant. And I, I wonder if that was an effort to try to help do something as far as providing additional support to districts that are in need. And so we did go after the maximum amount that we could, which was $350,000. And if we are awarded the grant, we will ask the committee to formally accept the grant so we can move forward with those plans. Tammy, as we know, we have now a new policy that we will be approving all of our grants, the school committee will be. So we'll be talking about that. We should hear of that in April, so we hope to be able to add that to our list. At our joint meeting, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the past few fiscal years and looking at where we were in FY '22, FY '21, '22, and '23, specifically around our minimum local contribution. And for our friends tuning in at home that may not be familiar with that term, that just means how much the state says the town of Blackstone and the town of Milville must contribute to the schools, to the regional school system. And so just to highlight briefly, in fiscal year '21, our minimum local contribution for Blackstone went up to just under 5%. Milville's went up over 5%. And then you can see, of course, subsequently what the school district did to try to help decrease our operating budget, to help absorb some of the increase that the state is requiring our two towns to contribute to the regional school system. And we have done that year after year after year to try our hardest to help absorb as much of the increase that the state has assigned to the towns to contribute to the, to the schools. And for those that are tuning in at home, I just want to make sure to underscore the fact that the school system has nothing to do with the minimum local contribution. That is what the state determines, the town of Blackstone and the town of Milville must contribute to the school district with the goal, and they are very clear about this, with the goal of each community paying for 59% of the overall school budget and the state paying 41% of the overall school budget. Now, Jill, I was sharing with the committee, our meeting is recent of today with the districts that have quite a bit of money to spend, frankly, so much that they need an extension on their, on their ESER money because they can't spend it all versus us that are going to sit here this evening and look at some numbers that are concerning, to say the least. But as we look at fiscal '23, which is the year, the fiscal year that we are currently in, I do want to highlight a few things because again, the school district did reduce the additional contribution by almost half a million dollars. It was 414,000. And then used an additional 1.6 million in grant offsets to help try to absorb the increased obligation to the towns from the state and of course, to help manage the increased operating costs of the school district with the minimum Chapter 70 increase of .44%. Point 44, not 44, .44%, not even half a percent. So where are we now? I think out of all the information we're going to hear this evening and to those at home that have been paying very close attention to our budget cycle, this information is the information that we have been waiting for. Because we have a new governor, there is a language that allows the new governor in any cycle, election cycle, essentially additional time to put his or her budget together, which makes sense. So we did get our governor's numbers or the cherry sheets, since it's also referred to, the last week of February, we got it about a week early, which we were very grateful for because it allowed us to move into action and start filling in the gaps in, in our anticipated revenues and additional expenditures. And so what we have in front of us essentially looks at fiscal year '23, which we're currently in, as far as our additional expenditures are concerned as assigned by the state and our additional revenues that are given us, to us from the state. And so I want to look at that fiscal '24 column, it's that one that's right in the middle. You'll notice that we have underneath the additional expenditures, school choice sending, charter school sending, Blackstone's minimum local contribution and Milville's minimum local contribution. Just underneath that, we have the additional revenues that we receive as a district to help offset the cost to the towns or the assessment to the towns. And so you can see our Chapter 70 revenue, our transportation, regional transportation reimbursement, school choice tuitions that we receive in, and then charter school reimbursements. So the way that the table works is you have the fiscal '23 data at the, on the left side, the fiscal '24 in the middle, and then the difference on the right side of the table. So you can see that our expenditures, which are bolded and underlined, as assigned by the state, have gone up $810,000. So in addition to the budget that we need to actually operate, right, that's all of our operating costs, the state has then come in and said, okay, Blackstone-Milville, we're going to add another $810,000 to your budget. If you look below that, you will see the additional revenues that the state is contributing to try to offset that. You will see the bolded, underlined additional revenues total at $119,516. That leaves us with an overall increase to our operating budget of just under $700,000, specifically $691,073. This is of significant concern to us because as the school committee knows, as we were working through our district operating budget, we had an increase of about 5%. It was a little bit over, but with our title and our ESER money, we were able to get that down to a 3.4. This has completely busted that. The additional minimum local contribution alone to Blackstone is up another 5.8% and to Milville, another 5.7%. For Blackstone, that means an additional $443,000 and Milville is an additional $138,000. That is before we ask for anything additional that we need to operate our school system. So to our friends and families and community members at home, I need folks to understand this. These are not numbers that we are coming to the towns and asking for. These are numbers that we are getting year over year that we have no control over, yet we have tried year after year to absorb as much of this as we can to help take the burden off of the communities. And so as we move through the rest of this cycle, it will be important that our communities understand that we have to work together on this problem. This is not a regional school district issue that we are asking the towns to solve. This is a state issue that is being placed upon us, an additional burden, that we are at the point where I'm not sure how much deeper we can go in trying to absorb these additional contributions that the state is assigning. This year to the tune of almost $700,000. In addition to that, of course, we have our health insurance increases, which we are still negotiating with Maya, our increase for next year. We have our transportation costs, our special education tuition increases, facility needs, our contractual obligations to our bargaining units, again, the minimum local contribution, additional safety supports and utility costs have gone through the roof, as we all know also as, you know, homeowners or renters that have to pay utilities. We've seen that. On slide 10, I don't want anyone to hurt their eyes, so in your packet, you have a paper clipped bundle that is titled Blackstone-Milville Regional School District School Committee, and it has the certification motions. But if you flip to page three, you will see a black and white copy of what is in the slide deck this evening. And I do want to talk through these numbers, just so the public has a good sense of what it is we're looking at, because this may be hard to see at home as well. I should also mention, the budget certification document will be in our FY '24 budget section on our webpage tomorrow, once the school committee certifies. So if you want to, anyone at home that's tuning in that might want to pull that up and delve into this, this will be there for public consumption and review. And of course, any questions, by all means, send them my way, I'm happy to address them. But what is on slide 10 and what is in your packet is the preliminary revenue and assessments that we are looking at for fiscal year '24. The first section of the top section, which is titled School Choice Sending Tuition, School, Charter School Sending Tuition and All Other, that is essentially our operating budget. So you will see the number that you're probably all very familiar with and anyone tuning in that's been watching our budget process is very familiar with, that $28,530,551. That is the operating budget of the school district. That's what we actually need to run the system to address all of the items that we list here on slide nine. The charter school and the school choice sending tuitions total another approximately 1.7 million. That gets added on top of the 28.5 million that we need to use essentially to run the day-to-day of the school district. Total budget for FY '24 with our school choice, charter school sending and all other, which is again, our expenditures, is $30,285,016. So that is the budget number at this point that we are working from. We do not have any control over school choice sending or charter school sending. Those numbers are assigned, essentially given to us. Just underneath that, you will see ESER III, which is the fiscal '23 and any rollover dollars from fiscal '22. The remaining balance we have there is $373,000. Again, in our call today, I was baffled to hear of the hundreds of millions of dollars that are still sitting in district accounts that have not been touched. And again, I, I share that, not to say anything disparaging about our, about our brothers and sisters in this work, but to say to those listening at home, we are using every dollar we can get and, and we are connecting it to our district improvement work. So that is what we have left. You might recall that our ESER allocation was over 1.2 million over those three years, and this is what we have left. We are coming right in as planned, as expected, and on budget. So we have done some very good work in managing that. We also, we also stood very firm in our conversations with the boards of selectmen, I know our school committee remembers, about at any additional positions that we are going to add using ESER dollars, we would, they would go away with ESER, that these were not positions that we were going to add into our budget. And if we needed to, we would find a way to do that, and we have done that. In this year's budget, we reduced our full-time equivalencies or positions by three. They were ESER-funded positions, we made a commitment to that. So we are not on that fiscal cliff because of ESER. We're not standing before the town saying, we have X number of positions, now what are you going to do about that, communities? We did not do that. We held firm to what we said we would do. So we will be spending the last amount of ESER dollars that we have, which is about $373,000 next year as offsets to the assessments to the towns. Additionally, you will see there is $400,000 in our E and D, from our E and D line to help offset the assessments to our communities. I know we have excess and deficiency on our agenda later this evening, so we'll talk a little bit about the excess and deficiency amounts that we have. But in this draft, we have $400,000 in use. From there, we have additional revenues. So these are the state revenues that we were talking about. We have our Chapter 70 estimated receipts coming in at $11,133,169. We have a regional transportation coming in at just under $740,000. Our school choice receipt, so this is school choice in, which is about 36 students totaling Again, we receive about $5,000 a student for school choice and send out about $5,000 per student. So those are our receipts of students that are choicing into our system. Our charter reimbursement is at about $283,000. And then of course, we have our special education grants, the IDEA preschool, the IDEA entitlement, those are federal grants, coming in at about $483,000. We have a student support academic enrichment grant of about $15,000. Our Title I is being forecasted this year at about $213,000. Our Title II at about $35,000. And then our circuit breaker, Jill's been hard at work, thinking very creatively in her office about how we can use additional circuit breaker funds to help again, offset the assessments to the towns next year, specifically around special education costs. So we'll have some future conversations about that. But collectively, it's looking right now at approximately a $13.8 million revenue offset to that $30.2 million budget amount. So that leaves us with the difference, if you look below, that we have tried to identify additional offsets that we can use to reduce that assessment to the towns. We included our gate fees for athletics, preschool tuition, our rental fees for our classroom spaces, that is predominantly by the By County Collaborative, if you're running where that is coming from, at $80,000. Our Medicaid at about $170,000, and then of course, our user fees for athletics and music. So that is an additional approximately $470,000, $469,000 specifically. So we take that and we add that on top of the $13.8 million, that leaves us with a $15.2 million amount remaining. If you look just below, you will see the split between Blackstone and Milville students. We're seeing, we saw a little bit of a toggle here. The Blackstone splits down by about a percent from last year and the Milville split is up by about a percent. So it kind of goes back and forth a bit. But this year, it looks like Blackstone is about 74.6% of our students, Milville is 25.3%. And of course, we know that that matters because that determines how we split essentially the remaining amount. And so if you look to the right side of the Google sheet, you will see a lot of the same numbers carried over at the top part, but then you will see our transportation total this year, which is about 2.3 million. You'll then see the reimbursements, which is the $739,891. And then the total remaining. This issue comes up, so I just want to kind of call it out because it comes up a lot and we talk with the towns about this. There is a sense that they pay the whole thing and then we get the reimbursement. That is not what happens. We get the reimbursement, we take it off the total cost and then they pay the difference. So I just want to identify that upfront so there's no confusion.
Can you say that one more time?
Yes. So in the past, we have been, it has been asked of the school district, when we present at our budget here, at their budget hearings at the towns, when we get our transportation reimbursement, why aren't they getting that back? And so I want to make sure that everybody understands, the total amount of transportation costs, so this year it's a 2.3 million, we take that reimbursement and we reduce that transportation cost and then the town split the difference. Does that make sense? cost, and then the town split the difference. Does that make sense?
You take the $739,000 reimbursement and put it towards the
That's right.
The $2.2, and then the leftover of that is split between the towns.
That's right. Yeah. So I just wanted to identify that upfront, because I know that that issue gets brought up, particularly as, you know, we get new members that are on the boards of selectmen and FinCom, and don't always understand that. Then, of course, we have our minimum local contribution, which for this year, for Blackstone, is up again, $443,302, totaling Blackstone's minimum local contribution to $7,969,016, and Milville's $2,562,580, which is up another $138,000. So again, you can see, just by nature of the minimum local contribution, the significant increase there. The exclusionary split is just transportation. So just so our friends at home that are tuning in know that when you see the terminology of exclusionary, that's referring to transportation. And then you have the additional above the minimum local contribution below the additionary split, the exclusionary split, excuse me, that is the remaining that is divided among the town using the percentages that I outlined a few moments ago, based on the total number of students. So that total above the minimum local contribution this year, because of the MLC increasing so much, we have a $2.2 million additional for Blackstone and $774,000 additional for Milville. Down below, you have the total assessments to the towns. You have the minimum local contribution for Blackstone at $7,969,16. You have the exclusionary at $1,213,084. You have the additional of $2,276,273. And the capital, which actually went down for both communities this year quite significantly, the capital expenses for Blackstone this year are $417,466.66, totaling the assessment to Blackstone as a preliminary total, of course, $11,875,839. For Milville, their minimum local contribution is $2,562,580. The exclusionary is $412,816. The additional, $774,622. And then, again, the capital went down quite a bit this year for Milville totaling $174,108.8, totaling an overall assessment to the town of Milville for $3,924,126. What those total increases are in terms of real dollars for Blackstone, it's a total of $1.2 million. Over last year, for Milville, it's a total of $500,000. Again, I want to go back to this slide, because So our next steps, we know that we need to certify, the school committee needs to certify a budget this evening. But my sense is, after looking at these numbers, and again, typically, I want to say, and I know the committee knows this, I'm saying it for our friends at home, we normally do this work at the end of January. So this work is typically done by the time we get to our certification, but because of the governor's additional timeline in releasing her budget, you know, we worked as quickly as we could to get all of these missing numbers in. But we know there's still work to do. Pause here.
I mean, we hoped for better. You know, we did come forward with what we know we need as a budget. We had our joint meeting with the town several weeks ago. So none of the needs are a surprise to anyone. Unfortunately, the calculations, once the state numbers came in, are what make this look so hard. So yes, we do have some work to do, but I think we were all comfortable with the budget that is presented, as it's presented, just based on knowing what we need as a district. So unfortunately, the state numbers don't agree with us. So we will, any questions for Jason on his presentation, or I think there's been a lot of consideration and a lot of time and energy put into this. Your new spreadsheets have been spot on for helping us see where everything actually is. So as a committee, we know that we're presenting the budget as it is needed. I guess we can just move into our motions.
We need just a motion to close the public hearing?
No, part of our public hearing is certification of the budget.
Just asking.
Yes.
Jason, I know that you have had some conversations with various folks at the state level, Department of Ed level, the other side, and your fellow superintendents. Do we, based on conversations of the impact of the governor's budget on especially regional districts, is there any chance that there's movement in the governor's numbers?
So we know that the numbers will change through June, right, as the budget continues to work its way through. The most confirmation we received was a statement, and I quote, "We'll give it a second look." So I don't know how, you know...
And so with that being said, is it worthwhile for us as members of the school committee to work on, you know, requests or sort of, you know...
Communicate.
Yeah, communicate our feelings and hope for our district, you know, as taxpayers, you know, beyond the sitting committee. But, I mean, it's so impactful. It's just, I just don't understand. I mean, so I just don't know. Is it still like, who would be the person we should talk, just to the governor's office, or is there other people who have say in the matter?
I think there's a lot of angles we can take. So we have significant levels of advocacy through the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, and their office is working very closely with the Education Committee, because as it was shared with me through their fiscal agent, the, I hate to say Mars, the lady from Mars, but you know, from, the fiscal agent from the Regional School District Association has said that if the state cannot help regionals figure this out, the long-term prognosis for all regional school districts, unless it's significant high poverty, are going to be in trouble. So she, I know, is working on drafting legislation with the Education Subcommittee at the state level to try to address this specifically for regionals. There are some regionals that fall into those higher deciles of poverty that are recipients of the Student Opportunity Act, and there are some that qualify for the Rural School Aid. We don't qualify for either of those. We're not rural, and we're not poor enough to get the support. So there's quite a few of us that are in that bracket. So to your question, Tammy, specifically, yes, we should, and it can only help, to reach out to the School Committee Association, to the Regional School District Association. Mike Soder, I had a lengthy conversation with a representative on Monday morning. He was super responsive, and he is doing some legwork on his end. I actually sent him the slides from the stack, so that he has them. So he's working on that. Senator Fatman and I are trying to just nail a time down. He was in hearings all day. But his office has been very responsive as well. It's just trying to get a time that will work, because they're very busy right now, as you can imagine. And then, as recent as of today, we were told, you know, that they would give it a second look. But to what end, and what that means, I don't know.
So the good news with that is certifying at what we knew we needed. We all know how this works, or I'll say it just in case anyone isn't, we can, we certify at this number. If we feel the need, we can recertify lower. We can never go higher than what we certify at tonight. So in my opinion, even if the state came through with a, you know, a nice little bundle, that it would just, it would be an offset. It wouldn't be like, oh, well, we should have done this. You know, it's going to be relief to the towns on the other end, if there's changes in the budget, in the governor's numbers. So I'm comfortable with certifying at, you know, the budget that we came to as a committee of $28,530,000. But I think that's a great question. If we could all flood the inboxes of Mars.
The woman from Mars.
A woman from Mars. Maybe we'll get some, we'll be heard. But so now, I think what we typically do is go around the table and read the motions. There's going to be extras for us, since we're a little short tonight. But Tara, do you want to start?
I'll take the short one. I move to adopt a gross operating budget for the 2023-2024 school year in the amount of $28,530,551.
Second.
Motion made by Tara and second by Dan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
I make a motion to move to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2023-2024 year. Chapter 70, $11,133,169. Regional Transportation, $739,891. School Choice Tuition, $182,522. Charter School reimbursement, $283,044. Above reimbursements total, $12,338,626. The total operating budget for 2023-2024 is $30,285,016.
Motion made by Tammy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Unanimous?
I move to assess the amount of $11,875,839 to the town of Blackstone to be applied to the operating budget for the 2023-2024 year, which includes $7,969,16. For the minimum contribution, $1,213,084. An exclusionary cost, and $2,276,273 in supplemental investments.
Motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous?
I move to assess the amount of $3,924,126 to the town of Milville to be applied to the operating budget for the 2023-2024 year, which includes $2,562,580. The minimum contribution, $412,816. An exclusionary cost, and $774,622 in supplemental investments.
Okay, motion made by Ted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the year 2023 through 2024. Excess and deficiency, $400,000. Medicaid, $170,000. Revenue for user fees, $89,000. Revenue from gate fees, $15,000. Revenue for classroom rental, $80,000. And revenue from pre-K tuition, $115,000.
Motion made by Tara, second by Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $417,466.66 to be assessed solely to the town of Blackstone, which includes $130,954.54 for the FWH Middle School, $74,697.19 for the JFK Boiler Windows Project, $155,893.43 for the roof projects, and $55,975.50 for the BMR High School Asbestos Management.
Okay, motion made by Tammy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
I move to adopt the capital and interest budget in the amount of $174,108.8 to be assessed solely to the town of Milville, which includes $44,564 for the FWH Middle School, $40,241 for the Milville Boiler Project, $70,260.58 for the roof projects, and $19,42.50 for the BMR High School Asbestos Management.
Motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
I motion to move to certify the alternate presentation of the total budget representing only monies moving into and out of the general fund. This presentation will be used by the Department of Revenue in the calculation of excess and deficiency.
Second.
Motion made by Ted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. All right. So I think we can take a motion to close our public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Dan.
Second.
Second by Tammy. That officially closes our public hearing for the FY '24 budget, and we will resume our meeting for March 9. So moving on, we have Consent Agenda A, warrants, minutes of meeting from February 9, which were included in an email and in the packet. Looking for a motion on Consent Agenda A.
Motion to accept warrants and meeting minutes, February 9, 2023.
Motion made by Dan. Is there a second? Second by Tammy. Any questions or comments on, all those in favor of Consent Agenda A, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, we do have some time for public forum. Is there anyone here to address the committee? Now we're sure time. We know they're watching. Moving on to school committee items. Update on the MSBA process.
So we're moving along. We are meeting monthly. On our last meeting, we had some ethics trainings to understand the do's and don'ts of getting the proper wording and actions taken. There's really not too, too much that has changed, so we'll have another meeting in April.
Right now, it's scheduled, it looks like it's monthly, the first Wednesday of every month, maybe?
Yeah.
Is that just a guess?
Well, it could change, but right now, yes. The first Wednesdays have been where we've landed.
Where do we stand on the process of getting some school building committee members? Because I know I've gotten a few emails, like, saying interest and such.
We had, Jill, PG and I had a great conversation yesterday with a community member that had reached out, expressing some interest. And so it was helpful. We had a nice discussion and...
Was there some history shared?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was very good. It was...
So we have one member of that committee, is what you're telling me?
Yes. And it was a really, it was very well worth the time. It was excellent.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that.
Yep.
All right. Any questions for Tara, being that she's... Any questions for Tara, being that she's chairing that committee? Do we have?
The other one?
The one you emailed?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So next up on our agenda is not something new, but it's something we've spoken of a few times. The warrant articles that we want to submit for our town meetings. And we did speak of this, our joint meeting with the towns and asked the town administrators to get back to us with our date of submission. So let's all just know that we have a placeholder for our town meetings. Time is of the essence to get them to them. But being, we've always had placeholders, so that isn't something new. But we don't want to miss getting these on in a timely manner. So the three we spoke of, two, one is something that's on our warrants each year for each town. It's the school committee stipend approval, which I honestly think has too many, too much information in it. But this is the way it's read every, or written every year at the town meeting. OPEB, we essentially took what we had last year and feel that this is the way we will continue to have it offered as a separate warrant to our towns. So the money is solely designated for that and applied to that from the towns, if approved by both towns. And the last one is a new, new one that we started speaking of maybe three meetings ago. The Capital Stabilization Fund warrant article. And what we did was reach out to Lynn from UniBank. She came out to our town, our joint meeting. But she deferred us to our legal counsel.
Yes, yep.
If you want to, you want to give a little bit of explanation of that?
Yeah, so Lynn was very helpful from UniBank in explaining, you know, in our joint meeting, kind of the ins and outs of a, of a capital stabilization fund. And then we worked with, with the school committee's counsel on just making sure we had everything worded just right. And it's pretty straightforward. So you have in front of you the draft language. And what is not included in this, which the school committee will need to decide upon, is the amount that we would want to put into that. Because we, the, in the warrant language, or the warrant article, excuse me, we do have to have the, list the purpose and the amount. So that would need to be.
So the purpose is definitely here?
Yes.
For the, for the purpose of funding a feasibility study?
Yes.
So if this is something we do want on our town floors, which is essentially setting up a new bank account for our district to be able to put this money aside, separate from our E and D, separate from any other revolving accounts that we have, and it, and it's kind of earmarked with the sole purpose of funding a feasibility study. And to my understanding, once that's paid for, we can change the purpose of this set account? Or do we have to start a new account?
No, you can rewrite the language.
Okay.
Yep. And the amount.
Capital accounts are, you know, maintained the same way our E and D's, E and D is, where it would take the two-thirds vote from a committee to move that money, to use that money. What it does do for us is it separates the money. So we, we have like a holding place for it. And it's not, you know, it's not held to the same restraints of the 5% of our operating budget in addition to. So I had a number in mind. I don't know if any of you did. We did receive an email with our certified E and D. We definitely just earmarked some for the $400,000 for our next year's budget, which we always do. And I do think we should continue to do. Because that's basically, you know, using that money towards the budget. But I think we estimate a feasibility study to be at about a million dollars? Is that?
Yes.
Are we still in that? In my opinion, I thought, I, I strongly feel if we can go to our towns and have 50% of that money coming from this capital account, and then we're going forwards to, forward to our towns saying we're funding 50% of it. And Dan, you've pointed out before, that money, this money that we're, we're moving here from an E and D, that is state money. That is, sure, it's definitely 75, 25 from the towns. It has come from many places. So now we're taking it aside and we're saying we're going to relieve you of this million dollar, you know, capital expense that we're asking you to pay for, and we're reducing it by half. I, I just think it's going to, you know, hope, hope to move that process along past the feasibility study phase. My fear is if we were to put 100% of it in, which we don't have, just so everyone knows. But if for some reason, there's a windfall and we came out with a million dollars, I think it would actually be hard not to include the towns on part of that financial responsibility in the feasibility study. But by taking half of it, and five, so that would be $500,000, and just going and asking for 500,000, they still have their hands in the game. And responsibility lies on our towns to get, you know, to want to be able to move forward with this project and to move it along, you know, for the kids of our future. So that's what my thought process was. But if someone else has one, too, I, we're open for that. I, I guess we do have to fill in the blank before we send it into the town. So we should approve, if we're approving this as a warrant article, we need to approve it with the amount that we are asking as a committee to put aside for the feasibility study.
Erin, can we just, if it, if we do, if the towns don't vote for the feasibility study, what happens to this money? Because it is earmarked specifically for that. I forget exactly how, did Lynn answer that? Or did we get an answer?
My quiet is just thinking back.
Yeah.
I was trying to.
So.
I thought she said it would have to be voted again at town meeting, but.
Okay, that makes sense, actually.
I feel like we did, she addressed that.
And we just sit there until the following?
We were in the library that night.
Yep.
Okay.
It would have to go back to the towns.
Is this something we want to do at this town meeting with the school budget? Or is this something we might want to entertain?
Well, we're not asking them to put the money in.
Oh, I understand.
The motion is to move money.
Is to establish the account.
Is to establish the account. Does it say it on here that where we're getting the money from?
No.
No, no. We're not asking them for it. It's coming from E and D, but it does not. And I, I was clear about that when I spoke with legal counsel.
And what I'm.
It's not an expense to them.
No, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying at this particular time, we're going to be going to town meeting for the feasibility study. This is a warrant article we can put with that town meeting to accept that right before the feasibility study to show that the, the district will be paying a portion out of their E and D.
I do think it would be better for us if we could deposit into that account before July 1st.
Okay.
I mean, if it fails this far, may, we could definitely do it again. But I think financially, it would be a safer place for the money by July 1st, if we establish that account.
We, we can't air mock that money for a feasibility study with or without this article?
I, I don't think unless we're paying it before June 30th.
No, it'll sit in the E and D.
We'd have to take it out next year.
So it's not going to go anywhere.
No, but it stays in, well, so, well, actually.
Unless we get over 1.5.
Well, what ends up happening is that that money is actually not available to us until it's certified. So as of July 1st, E and D goes away until DLR certifies it. Yeah. And sends it back.
So we wouldn't have access to it in November?
No.
In November?
No, we actually, as a matter of fact, we couldn't, we, we could not even project the use of because we don't have the certification number until then.
So establishing it now, before the end of this fiscal year, we can, you know.
It allows us to identify.
Relatively say where the money is coming from. Because we do have a certified E and D.
Right. When E and D goes away to get cert, recertified, this stays in that capital stabilization fund.
Tammy?
I, I think one of the other thoughts that I had is if this is already in place, then leading up to the conversation, I mean, we're going to have many conversations about the reason, you know, the purpose of the feasibility study, why it's so important, how that helps us move the project along. And I think being able to say, oh, by the way, we have half of the money already earmarked. I think that helps that conversation for the folks that we're, you know, going to try to get their buy-in and their support. And showing that we are really backing the, the process ahead of time might be helpful for that, is one of my thoughts.
And it may or may not pass through the towns. I mean, they, but I, I think trying is our job to, you know, to put it forward and to try to get, it is something that is allowed by the state. So even if we didn't have a, we were, we are already in the MSBA pipeline. But even if we weren't, for all of the years I've sat here and been asked, where's your five-year plan? What's your five, capital, capital, capital? It's actually embarrassing that we don't have some kind of capital account to cover the broken emergency pieces. The, we, we do have our E and D, yes. But to say that we're not, we don't have that emergency fund, I, I, I'm a little embarrassed about that, just from my longevity here, so.
Do we need to, do I need to make a motion to?
So are we, do you want to do them?
That number?
We can do a motion to accept all warrant articles? Or we can do them separately? It's up to you guys. The OPEB?
So I could.
I think the amount is going to go in when you make the motion.
So if I make a motion to accept the three warrant articles as written with the edit to the capital stabilization fund to appropriate $500,000?
So the motion is made by Tara to approve the town, the FY24 annual town meeting warrant articles as written, including the amount of $500,000 into the wording of the capital stabilization fund warrant article. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tammy. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to abstain. I have no problem with the first two. I just have more, I am, I'm not sure on the stabilization fund. I think we should be voting. This article, this warrant article, you know, is to the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee voted on Thursday, March 9th, 2023. The first sentence of it, that's not a, that's not a, that's an action we should be taking to create the warrant article. It shouldn't be in the warrant article. It should be, the warrant article should start off with, you know, to establish a stabilization fund for the cap, for, for the purpose. That would be it, but we wouldn't have.
It would say, it would read just like these others, to see if the town will.
Okay, well, all right, well, all right. So it's going to start with two C, like, it's going to start with two C if the town.
Yes, it'll be framed just like that. But we had to word it this way first because of the specific type of.
I guess it would be to vote and authorize.
Right, and, and I'd like to see the, the Mass General law, like, in our, in our, in our warrant articles, you know, to establish the actual, you know, regional stabilization fund under, you know, chapter 71, article 32 of the Mass MGL. This, you know, so that it's just similar to the, to our other ones. OPEB references the Mass General law in our, in our page. Just to, I'm not, just so, I, I'm not against, I understand the intent of the article. And I'm not, not in, I am not, not in favor of it. I, I just, I just question the timing of it. I, I'm more, I'm more concerned about getting the budget passed. We're going to have a lot of conversation, I think, upcoming with that.
And I feel like you're seeing money attached to this.
Well, I'm, I'm seeing, in my experience as a selectman, I'm seeing, I see what other people are going to assume that, that they're going to see. And I think the presentation of this article coming up.
I mean, OPEB is money. If they're pay, if they approve that, they're paying that.
OPEB is a response, is a responsibility of the towns, which they're paying. And which was a five-year, six-year conversation that finally has come into place. This here is, there's a lot of conversations that's going to be coming around, just this budget, then the feasibility study, then, then this. I, I hate to say it, but, you know, Blackstone has electronic voting now, and I'm just going to, and, and I, I am not, again, I am not, not in support of it. I just think the wording has to be correct and the timing is everything. If this came up in front of a feasibility study at article one, and then there's article two as a feasibility study, and we're showing the people of Blackstone and Millville that we're paying half of this, you know, that's feasibility study at that time? Because if that passes, then, and then the feasibility study will pass.
So I agree, that first, can you retract your motion?
Yep, I retract my motion.
We can vote to.
Motion retracted by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
All right. We're just going to talk about this a little more. So I think it would need to read something like, and we, we can do this now because I don't want to miss a deadline. So crossing out, the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee voted on Thursday, March 9th. We're crossing out that whole line. But it's to see if the town will vote and authorize the, it would be the Blackstone Millville School Committee to establish a stabilization fund for capital planning relative to the school building project. Did you hear that?
Yeah, okay, so if I, yeah.
So to authorize the BMR School Committee to establish a stabilization fund for capital planning relative to the school building project. I mean, that.
I agree with you on that.
Establishes the fund?
Yep.
And what it's for. If it's approved, we can, I mean, actually, we, I don't even think we need to go that far. If, if it's approved, I mean, we could say something like, if it's approved, the committee will make a, you know, make appropriation.
Well, so.
From their E and D, we're not asking for funds.
We don't have to explain, we don't have to explain, like, what we're going to do.
But they don't need, they, I don't want them to think we're asking them to fund it.
No, no, I get it, but that, that's the discussion on, so the warrant article will just, like you said, to, your first sentence, to establish a stabilization fund in accordance with chapter 71, Mass General law, chapter 71, 16, 16G and a half.
Is that the right one? Are you really reading that one?
That is, yes.
I don't know if you made it up.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't. I did hypothetically a few minutes ago, but that's.
Point five, so G, what'd you say?
It's actually chapter 71, 16G, and a, section 16G and a half.
Okay. Is that like a half or point five?
Uh, one slash two, half, yep.
All right, so, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee to establish a stabilization fund for capital planning relative to school building, to the school building project, Mass General law, chapter 71, pursuant to Mass General law, chapter 71.
Section.
Section 16, G and a half.
Yeah, and if I can, for the purpose.
Pursuant, for the per, all right, we're go, so, continue?
Yeah, now we just go.
Hang on a minute, I'm gonna, I need to type this.
For the purpose.
I'll just, I can just write it down to you. But we have to make a motion.
For the purpose of, so we already said, relative to the school building project, but.
Right, I would've.
For the purpose of.
I would've kicked, kicked out relative to the school, stabilization fund, Mass General Law in a section, right? For the purpose of, and then that's when you go into, for the purpose of, um.
Oh, I see, so.
So the purpose is for the.
For the purpose of funding a feasibility study.
Yeah, yeah.
For the purpose of funding a feasibility study.
Yeah. In the amount of.
Well, I don't want it to sound like we're asking for, um.
I, I, I understand that. In the amount of, say, $500,000, if that's what you're.
Or I, I think it would sound something like, the committee will appropriate at a future meeting funds out of their E and D account in the amount of $500,000.
Right, in the amount of $500, $500,000.
Can I say that, though? Can I say the committee will?
And then the next sentence would be the funding source.
Will appropriate.
Well, you put the amount first, and then, then you provide the funding source, which will be provided by the.
So that appropriate $500,000.
Yeah, which will be, which will be prov- um.
I thought we didn't want to put that.
Allocated by the Regional School District Committee. And the source, out of E and D. You can clean up the language, but.
Oh, thanks. All right, ready?
And so we're gonna vote on that, and so that eliminates that first sentence.
No, what, what?
Well, that first sentence, the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee voted, we don't put that in the law.
Okay, so that's, so cross out the Blackstone, so I'm just gonna read to you a new warrant article that we just wrote. Capital, it's gonna be labeled capital stabilization fund warrant article. Blackstone Millville Regional School District, Mar- uh, 2023, I guess, not March. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter 71, section 16G and a half. Nope, I skipped it.
You, you skipped the.
To see if the town will vote to authorize the Blackstone Millville School Committee.
To establish.
To establish a stabilization fund for capital planning relative to the school building project pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter 71, section 16G and a half. For the purpose of funding a feasibility study, the committee will appropriate a future, at a future meeting, the amount of $500,000 from their E and D account to fund this.
To contribute to the funding. To contribute to the funding.
I don't like the word contribute. It makes it sound like we want someone else to contribute.
No, no, we're contributing the funding, to the funding.
To what? Establish.
We've already established it, that's what we're doing.
Tara, can I see that?
Yes. Are you gonna be able to read that? I'm sorry.
After school, you're going back up here.
For the purpose of funding a feasibility study. Committee will appropriate.
You're gonna be a tell me.
Listen, we already know what day it is, Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Can I tell you, the, the part that I'm getting hung up on, the, the committee will appropriate at a future meeting. I don't understand what that means.
No, I'm not saying that.
What does that mean?
That means we're going to put the money in.
We're gonna do it.
So the committee will appropriate.
$500,000.
At a future meeting, the, the amount of $500,000 for, so does that need, am I saying it backwards?
I wouldn't put the, will appropriate.
At a future meeting, the committee will appropriate funding from our E and D account?
So you, in the amount of $500,000 to be funded by the district, by the BMR Regional School District's E and D account. You don't say we will be appropriating it, we're, we're already gonna vote on that.
We're gonna have to vote on moving that money when, if.
No, we're gonna have to vote on that tonight.
But if the account is established?
That's right.
Yeah, they love to make a formal vote.
We have to take a formal vote to move money out of E and D.
Yeah.
Right, but we have to, we have, we have, we have to vote on that tonight, not that it's, we're voting on agreeing that we will do that in a future, at a future time. We have to, we're gonna vote on that number tonight in this article, and to be funded by the BMR SD E and D fund. That's, that's how you end it. You just put the funding source. You don't tell them that we're gonna be voting on it after, we're gonna, we're gonna have, be obligated to vote on it if it passes in a town meeting.
Can I, can I read what I have and see if I'm looking at this right? To see if the town will vote to authorize the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee to establish a stabilization fund for capital planning relative to the school building project pursuant to chapter 71, section 16 and a half, for the purpose of funding a feasibility study, in the amount of $500,000 to be funded by the district's E and D account, E and D fund.
I'll, I'll make that motion. It's, the only thing is 16G and a half, I don't know if you missed the G, but it is a G.
Or the half.
You got the half, you just didn't say G.
One slash two.
I got one slash two, the fraction.
Yeah.
So does this still fit what the attorney told us to write? Because it sounds like we, at, at the beginning of this conversation, we said we had our counsel approve this language, and it looks like we just blew every piece of the language out of the water, so.
It looks like she wrote it as we were voting.
Is it still what the, uh, counsel said we should write?
I think we did two separate things, I think.
I just wanna make sure, we got coun- legal counsel, did we just uncounsel ourselves?
Everything's still there.
Seems, yeah, it seemed to me that she put together.
A motion for us.
For this, yes.
Not for town meeting.
And then, that, what we just did was we wrote the motion for the town meeting warrant.
We, yeah, yes.
So that, so to, to everybody's point.
As long as we have the right MGL in there.
Your, the stipend in the OPEB language is the language in the warrant.
Right.
I think, I don't think I know what, what our, uh, what your legal counsel did was wrote the language for you all tonight, not the warrant language. And she wrote the language for you all to take, to, to make the motion to take the vote.
And that's, and that's why I wanted to.
So there were separate pieces.
We're voting on the warrant articles that we're submitting, and I didn't think this was the warrant article we were submitting. This is the language that she wanted us to understand it. But everything that's here is in what, in the motion, in this new motion, or this new warrant article, it just adds the general law and, and the funding, the definitive, definitive funding source.
And we, we did that because the, um, as you know, the, the law's very clear about the school committee has to vote to approve the capital stabilization fund.
So it sounds like we need to do this, approve this, and then approve the warrant.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, that's what I, well, right.
We have to approve as a committee that we want to establish.
That's what I was getting at to the beginning.
Then we're approving the warrant language.
So we gotta all agree that we want to establish.
Yeah.
A stabilization fund. It doesn't have to be for any purpose that, but we want to ex, so as a school committee, we can accept the Mass General Law, chapter 71, 16G and a half, to establish a stabilization fund.
Right, which is what this said originally.
Right, and then, then that's it, that, I'll make, I just made that motion right now.
So motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. And this is to establish.
A stabilization.
Stabilization. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
Now we can create, now, and this article's creating a purpose for a stabilization fund.
Okay, so we just created a capital stabilization fund. Now we're going to approve.
The language.
The warrant articles being sent to our towns, and I think we should just do them all separately. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the school committee stipend.
So moved.
Town meeting warrant article.
Second.
Motion made by Tam.
Motion to accept the OPEB?
Tam.
Oh, sorry, you didn't vote yet.
Motion made by Dan for OPEB, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tammy. And do you wanna read for us one more time what our article will read for the town meeting? For, for capital stabilization fund?
To see if the town will vote to authorize the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee to establish a stabilization fund for capital planning relative to the school building project pursuant to chapter 71, section 16G and a half, for the purpose of funding a feasibility study, in the amount of $500,000 to be funded by the district's E and D fund.
Okay, so, does someone want to move that?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, so we have three articles going to our towns for their town meeting. That's.
And we'll get those up.
Great, we're done with those. Uh, next on our agenda is 2324 school calendar. This puts our first day of school for staff at August 29th. 29th is the PD day. Students return August 30th. That's a Wednesday. We have a long Labor Day weekend, we have several weeks of exciting learning in September. We have Indigenous People Day on October 9th as a day off. November 3rd will be a PD day. Are these lined up for a reason? I, I do remember a, a time when we used to, like, make it the 10th. Just asking. Oh, is there any flexibility there? Just to make, like, 'cause that would be, end up being a longer weekend for.
Oh, I see.
Or, just throwing it out there, because we're observing Veterans Day on the 13th.
Yeah, usually it's the, I think it's the week before. Isn't it usually the week before? Yes, typically the week before.
Right.
So I think that's how that, that fell out.
Yeah. Is there, is there?
Can we?
Other already plans for that? So I just think.
You mean, do we, do we have it scheduled already?
We have parent-teacher conferences in those weeks, I mean, it's a busy time for teachers, too. It might be good for them to have that time to.
If he, if, if the question is, can we move it from the 3rd to the 10th?
The 3rd to the 10th.
There's nothing that is aligning us to the 3rd that's requiring that.
Okay.
So, no. If you want to, if the committee would like to move the day, we do.
I'm just throwing out there as a suggestion. We'll keep moving on, Thanksgiving, half-day, Christmas, it's on a Monday this year.
We can't, it's Christmas, right?
So the 21st will be a half-day, that's a great, that's great, that's a Thursday. March has another PD day, that's great. And our last day would be slay, our, ooh, graduation, May 31st?
It's the way that the calendar falls really funky this year.
Hasn't happened since 1992, I just want everyone to know.
It's a leap year, too.
For a reason.
It's a leap year. We have an extra day, and it.
Oh, wow.
Kinda throws off the.
Okay, that's exciting.
Yeah.
No school for the class of 2024 in June. They're done. That's a gift.
Senior week is always that week after Memorial.
Well, and it will be. It will be that Tuesday through Friday, wow.
Yep.
Um, and last day of school is a Friday, god, how does that happen?
Ben, enjoy 90 days.
One snow day throws them through a weekend.
It does.
Okay. All right, so besides that November 3rd date that I recommend moving to November 10th, is there any other discussion on the school calendar?
I guess my only question with that is, does that historically, and I'm speaking from experience in another district, does that increase staff absences when it falls before?
But they have to attend PD.
Not if you take a personal day or a sick day or whatever day.
We have it written in their contract like that for PD.
We don't typically approve personal days on PD days.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody could qualify.
I mean, does that, I mean, I, I guess the question is, does that then cause more problems than help? I, I see, I see some heads nodding, I'm just saying. I'm just asking, I don't know, I, I mean.
And just because.
Maybe it's just my colleagues that do that, but.
We, so we, if, so you might remember, the Blackstone Valley PD day is not every district, but, but a bunch of the districts, well, there's, on the 6th of October, and it was linked to that long existing weekend. We moved that because it had a really different vibe to it when you connected it to a longer weekend, and, and it didn't necessarily increase attendance or, or impacted attendance issues, but it was.
It was a little more torturous.
A little more laissez faire, and it was a little more, we got a long weekend, we're kinda.
We're here until 3:00 on a long weekend.
So we did, we moved it off of that, and we also wanted to move it, more importantly, so that we spread our PD out, it wasn't all, like, right at the beginning. So we did the November.
Because we added the day in, in August.
Right.
Is what you're talking about.
Yep, yep.
I think keeping it on the November 3rd is nice, too, because then you have the week after Thanksgiving, two and a half days off, so, otherwise it's a lot in a row.
Well, and I think, I mean, when parent, when families are going away, it's great to have that extra day, but when you're not, and you have to take a day off on a Friday, and then a day off on a Monday as a working parent, that's not really cool either, like.
Well, they're gonna have Monday off for a holiday, possibly.
Yeah.
That's the only reason I was saying it, because now you're looking at a separate weekend.
We don't get it off.
Oh, yeah, people don't all get Veterans Day off.
Yeah.
In the, in the real working world. So I, I don't know, that's just my thought, I mean, I, like I said, just from a little experience.
So do we want to approve the account, the calendar?
Motion approved, it's written.
Hey, motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara.
Jason, Juneteenth is just noted because of 12-month employees, is that, because that fall, I mean.
If we have a, yes.
If we have a snow day.
And if we have a snow day.
And would, would we observe it on that Wednesday?
So I looked that up, and it, and it, what I found was that, yes, it is, it is a holiday that is absorbed, absorbed, observed, excuse me, on the day it falls.
On the specific day.
Yeah. So if we had three snow days, we're going the 17th, 18th, we're off the 19th, and then our last day would be the 20th.
Yeah, I think it was last year that we did that, right?
Yeah, it was on a Monday.
Last year was the next day, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Just clarifying that for.
All right, so, um, all those in favor of the 2324 school calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Crazy.
And that concludes the school committee items, the report of the superintendent. Over to you.
Thank you. So we already heard from our portion of a graduate team. Uh, in your packets, we have, um, a couple of changes to our by-county collaborative agreement. So as you know, we're part of a special education collaborative, um, and, frankly, the most important thing in your packet regarding this is that first page. Um, it's a memorandum to the boards, uh, to the members of the Board of Directors from the executive director, and it's, uh, highlighting the amendments to the collaborative agreement. The big kinda headlines, if you look underneath the third paragraph, it says, changes made to the collaborative agreement are as follows, there are three of them. Um, you will see, um, the big one is, um, CCONC Public Schools, and the addition of another school system to the collaborative, uh, which is very helpful in a many, in many ways. And so you can see on page one, section I and O, we wanna add, uh, CCONC Public Schools to the collaborative agreement. Page three, section V and A, um, is each board member shall be entitled to one vote on behalf of each appointing member district representative, um, and of course, I am the representative on your behalf, uh, on this, um, board. And then page, uh, 14, um, I won't read all of this, but essentially just outlines the, uh, the request to initiate proceedings to terminate the agreement.
So how many does CCONC make for?
I believe it's 14. I think, oh, it's right here, on page one, they're all listed here, was that right?
Um.
Yep.
Is it going to reduce any money?
Um, I don't know that it will reduce.
Split 14.
Yes, I don't think it'll reduce any costs, um, but it.
20.
Yeah, there's twenty, well, I was not thinking of the, um, regional, the tri-county.
That's great.
But yes, so, no, it does not reduce the, the cost. It isn't, it doesn't work like, um, like Maya, like an insurance consortium where you all throw your your claims in and then share them. It works very differently in terms of they run programs and we pay based on each student that needs to engage in the program. But if you have another town, where it can become helpful is, um, if we have one student that might need a, or two or three students that might need a particular program that they don't have, but CCONC has one, and now they're in it, so now we've got four kids. And, you know, men, and, and Easton has two kids, well, now you might be able to start a program. Or otherwise, if we just had our two kids, they may not do that. Frankly, Jill would probably do that here anyways, but
Okay.
You, you only get one vote?
Yes.
Uh, just look, out of all these, there's only three regional school districts, I would think that the superintendent would get a vote for every, each town he represents in the district.
Yes.
The rest of town there is
It is one.
Yeah.
And even if he got two, it would have been
I would still lose.
If you threw King Philip in there, tri-county, we might have, we have hope.
Yeah, I still lose.
I don't know why you don't bring this with you. All right, so, action required for the BIKO membership and updated agreement, is there a motion to
Make a motion to accept the BIKO membership updated agreement.
A motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tammy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
And then, Erin, I have this for you to sign up for, it's in, in purple folder here. Thank you. The next item on my report is an update on our Director of Finance and Operations. I'm very pleased to share with the school committee and the community that after a long, a very long and exhaustive search, I think if you went back to June, you would, believe it or not, I actually had more here, not that I have much to begin with, but I had more then than I have now. With not having a finance and operations director for however many months that's been. But we are very pleased, uh, to present to the school committee this evening, Ms. Denise Carrier. And Denise, if you want to come on up. Denise has a really unique background. And we selected Denise to move forward in the position, frankly, for a few reasons, and I know she'll talk a, a bit about this in her, in her remarks to the school committee, but, um, Denise has done extensive work in, uh, in UMass as account, in accounting and finance, um, for many, many years. Then went on to be a teacher of that field, which I think is really powerful, and has spent many years in the classroom teaching finance and accounting and many other things. But in addition to that, also has served on her town's finance subcommittee, um, for the community where she presides. So I think that resides, which I think is really impactful.
We all know how impactful that is.
And has, um, credentials in the classroom, school leadership at the building level. Um, and has a, as you'll see in her resume, a bachelor's degree, uh, in, um, business, specifically, uh, finance and accounting, I believe. And has a master's in nonprofit management. So Denise is coming with a ton of experience in a lot of different places that I think is going to really round out our new Director of Finance and Operations position, so Denise, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for that warm, um, introduction. When I visited the district, I did a full-day visit, and what really struck me the most was the people. And I think the people is what makes the district. That was for everyone from the principals to the central office staff, and right down to administration, and even, even when I met with the teachers. I was privileged to be sitting in on a data meeting, which was a middle-of-the-year data meeting, and I was beyond impressed by not just what they were talking about, just the research that they had done to, to come up with. There wasn't any questions that could be asked, because they already asked themselves, and they answered those questions, and they already put corrective measures in. They cared, and this was something that, that really struck me, and if I can say that, uh, turning event of what could connect me, I mean, that level of care and dedication is something that I have, so I could relate to it, and it made me feel like, um, that, that everybody here thought the same way, and I think when you work in an environment, if you work with people that, that you feel like you can connect with, and that you have the same wishes and beliefs and drive, I'm hardworking, motivated, you know, endless days, I don't punch a time clock. And I got that impression from everybody, that they were here for the, for the end result, which was the students, and that's what drives me every day right now, and it'll drive me in the future. So I'm excited to be working with the school committee, the district, the community, I'm excited to serve the community, so.
We're excited to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you for enduring our long meeting tonight with our open hearing, and, but it is also, if you're going to dive into
Correct, and it has been very informative to, to just be observing it, um, and looking forward to be parting, yeah, part of it, so observing is just the first step.
Next year, you'll be doing it.
Yes, yes, I will.
So you have action required on
Yes, because, uh, we will go into executive session and have to, the school committee will have to approve, review and approve our contract. As the business manager for the state system. Questions for Denise, anything?
Uh, yes, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Where is Fiskdale, Massachusetts?
It's a subs, it's a sub town of Sturbridge.
Oh, okay, I must have missed that one, I never
Yeah, it's, um, it's kind of, it's like a borough of, but you would call it Sturbridge, but it does have its own zip count, zip code.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Denise? She'll be joining us, um
March twentieth.
March twentieth.
Yes.
So very soon.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And she doesn't need to say
No, no. And the last item on my report is just the FY twenty-four, uh, budget update. As we, we know, we certified the budget earlier this evening, but we also know there's still work to do. So, um, we are prepared to do that and to come back to the school committee with some additional, uh, thoughts on our budget at the March twenty-third meeting.
Did you tell Denise that we're getting older and we need things to be bigger?
Have you heard our other meetings?
Yes.
We like big print, large print.
Yes.
Actually, Tammy, we have one meeting left.
I only have one meeting left, right, so we might not catch up, but they're almost as old as me, if not older, so, just saying.
Was there anything else under FY twenty-four before we shift to the report of the business office? Other than that, we know we're gonna bring back additional considerations for the school committee at March twenty-third.
We have a lot of work to do.
Yes. That concludes my report.
Except
The business office report.
Moving back to the business office.
Change seats.
Roll right back into this, so, um, in your packet, we have our expenditure and review, um, report. I met with our assistant treasurer today for a good chunk of time. One of the things that he and I talked about, he's going to prepare this for the school committee, um, so that you can see. Literally and figuratively, Tammy, you'll be able to see the, the numbers. Uh, but we're gonna look at, um, each of the, um, you might recall, uh, last year, when we looked at the expenditure report, we had an update based on, we call them like the series, you have, you have the thousand series, the two-thousand series, the three-thousand series. Those are all of the lines within each of the function codes that the school committee authorizes, uh, you know, money to be appropriated and spent in. And so, um, what Ron and I were discussing today is while some of our, like, specific lines, uh, look like they are over, because they are, the actual series itself, like the thousand series lines may not be over. So it was one of those things where we, um, are going to have Ron prepare that for everybody.
So it'll actually be less lines, because you'll be putting them
All the thousands together.
Thousand.
Yep. So that will really give you a better sense of, like, where we're actually over in the
Are you, we're gonna be getting that instead of this?
No, we'll get them both.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yep, yep. But we thought it'd be helpful to, to collapse the, like, thousand series into one, so you can actually see, like, where are we with the thousand series and
There's no hope for the four thousands. So, just for the record, I see a lot of brackets in the four thousands, we're in trouble.
I think, Tammy, you're the reason why they created this new format, so
With that being said, when, um, the encumbrances
Yes.
Should we tie that up, should we, I, I think, so going into April? Would it be safe to encumber
Yes.
For the rest of the year, just so we can get a better idea on this number?
On the landing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point, Erin, so one of the things we, um, have discussed with the building principals specifically, because they are, they tend to be a larger
Late incumbent.
Yeah.
And I don't want them to feel like they, I want them, I just want them to project what the, what they need left for
Right, it's not a budget freeze.
Correct.
It's just, if you know you need to spend something in May and June, get it in April, before April break, like, order it, so it's encumbered. So we know how much of our real, uh, of our budget we can forecast better toward the end.
So to encumber, we have to have the PO, or we can't say
They do the requisition, and then we do the purchase order approval, and then the money's encumbered.
But does that, does that force people to buy things that they may not need if they waited?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't, most of, most of
Do you know what I'm saying, Dan?
I know what you're saying.
Like, I might need it, stop buying the, I might need it stuff.
Telling us to get this now, is that what you're telling us?
Yeah, yeah, I just
Well, we're just saying, if you need fifteen clipboards in June for a project, just get the fifteen clipboards in April for the project. But might they say something else? We have their budget and we have that itemized, so we would be able to check to see. And we do review those before we approve the requisitions. I do that.
So And maybe just take a look at the account, like, where we do have, we have big encumbrances, but no brackets. Just to see if we're, that's where we really stand, or
So you'll notice, um
Those last few look
The special education lines are the biggest, uh, and those we've gone through with Jill, uh, PG, and with Jen, uh, the financial assistant in the learner services office. Those are true numbers, like, those are, we had students that didn't come or aged out, or, um, brought, we brought back, so that, those numbers are legitimate.
You know, if we can get a better handle on that, um, April, mid-April
Yep.
And we know where other needs are, we can act as a, a committee to make sure that that is taken care of.
We will definitely do that.
I mean, there's not a lot.
I think by our, um, school committee, the second school committee in April, I think, I'm trying to think, that's the twenty
Do we have that in the meeting?
Is that one real, yeah, we have one April sixth, is that the only one we have? I thought we had another one.
Break rate, middle.
Oh, no, the twenty-seventh we have one.
We do.
Yep. So for the April twenty-seventh meeting, we should have that firmed up.
Okay.
Any other questions on the expenditure and revenue report? Uh, the personnel update is to be received and placed on file. Uh, you can see the appointments. Most are substitute, uh, or caf workers, and of course, we have Denise. We'll file that, and then in your packet, you have our, um, report on our excess and deficiency calculation from Kim Peliquin. And so she has submitted that to, uh, all of us and to the appropriate, uh, folks on the town side. And the total certified unencumbered E and D number, uh, is one point two million, is listed here. And so, again, there's no action to be taken here, this is a information, um, only item.
Operating and capital?
From FY
Nothing I'm questioning.
Yes, well, because what it, what it is, is we, well, that's because we certify, and then we have all of our, we, we have this discussion with them all the time.
Okay.
We certify, and then we have all of our offsets, and then we also have additional, uh, we certify the, what the committee is gonna need to, what we will need to do. You might remember that I brought forward to the committee the updated cherry sheet numbers, the final budget numbers. Uh, it was like late June, early July, and showed the changes from the initial budget that was certified and where the additional revenues were gonna be. Um, I had a lengthy discussion with Ron about that, actual, that very issue today. Because what we will, what we need to start doing is recertifying our numbers when, um, we get the final, um, budget from the state. Uh, that just ties everything out on our end-of-year report and in our E and D. We end up spending a lot more time going back and forth because we haven't done that. So we certify that first number, but then we don't go back and recertify the final budget numbers from the state. Whether it's, whether it's, you know, um, charter tuition reimbursement, or whether it's, um, you know
That doesn't count towards the operating in capital, maybe?
It, it does, yeah. So we have to go back and recertify when that budget is finalized by the state. So she, so Kim works with Ron to recalculate these numbers, and, and sometimes they are a little bit different. Which is what can take some time and back and forth.
Thank you, Carrie, we'll just
Carrie.
Carrie's here. I just lost my agenda. So we're on the report of the business office.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions on the excess and efficiencies? I know you've all seen it. That concludes the business office report.
Denise. Thank you for enduring our
Very informative. Okay, so the high school, um, boiler number one is still, um, shutting down. Uh, industrial burner has diagnosed a bad diffuser. The estimated cost for the pot is seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars plus four hours labor, so it'll be a little over a thousand dollars, replace that. JFK, um, classroom A-one had a power valve on the unit ventilator leaking. This was discovered approximately six PM at night. Tried to get a plumber in, and he said he couldn't get there till the first thing in the morning, so I ended up taking the valve partially apart, and I found a little piece of metal that was wedged in, causing the water to squirt out. Once I removed that piece of metal, it was still dripping pretty good, so I went back around eleven PM that night, checked it, and it miraculously stopped leaking altogether, and has not leaked since. My only concern is once the water cools off, it may start leaking again. I did try to get a quote from a plumber, and he said he doesn't even want to touch it, because there are no shut-off valves to it, and the pipes are pretty, you know, crusty. Better lack of words there. So, what we're gonna do is, once the heating season is over, I'm gonna attempt to shut it down, drain the water, and change that valve myself.
Is that a classroom we use?
Uh, after school.
Okay.
Yeah, um, it caused a large puddle on the floor, but we vacuumed it right up, and there was no further damage, so we were able to use it that day. The Millvale Elementary School, I've been in touch with Simplex, and they assured me that most of the pots will arrive by March seventeenth. So at this point, I told them, we're shooting for an April vacation to get them in there, not to disrupt any learning at that time. By then, heating season would pretty much be over anyways, and, as you know, we really have no issues with the heating, you know, we can control them manually.
Nobody's been cold this winter?
No, if anything, they're opening the windows because we don't want the building to get cold. Uh, and the security system, we've had no alarm since we, uh, replaced that suspected faulty motion detector, so, I found more there. Christina, is she still there? No, she's gone, but she was getting, uh, phone calls from police department to show up in the middle of the night. And the water treatment, um, as you know, the media was replaced over February break, and the water is much clearer than in the past. the water is much clearer than in the past and we'll be following up with the changeover in April as well to the new permagonite.
So now with the new filter, we are using well.
Yes, we're back to the well water, yep.
The building is being supplied by the well water, not trucks?
Correct, the kitchen is still using bottled water to wash the fruit and vegetables.
How long will it be until we get our next, a next test result from the town?
We're actually waiting on the state for the test results that they took right after the system was changed over.
Okay.
Sean who is, who goes in and monitors the filtration system is on vacation this week so.
The water operator?
Yep.
For the town, is that who?
Mm-hmm, NWS. And spring sports are about to start. Right, that's a good sign, so the custodian crew will get the shot put nets and the discus nets up as soon as the weather cooperates which is gonna be probably next week when we get those up. I hate to say it but there's a chance of snow Monday night into Tuesday morning.
Come on Scott.
Until the next. The new hurdles are gonna be, require some assembly, I spoke to one of the track coaches today and he said that, I guess there's four track coaches and they're gonna do it as well as some students. Tennis nets.
Sounds like a good service hour opportunity.
Yeah, hopefully it doesn't require that much assembly. We did get the starting blocks in yesterday that were on back order and caught to store the hurdles on and move them around, those came in yesterday as well.
The track numbers are huge.
Yes.
Yeah, the number, the number of kids that have signed up so we are like wicked excited about that, there's a lot of interest.
That's good, it always used to be a huge sport and then it seemed like the last couple of years it declined and.
Yeah, I think it's on the upswing which is awesome.
Good.
It must have been that training that someone did with the kids over. That really got them interested in the, just putting it out there.
Work on the baseball fields will begin as soon as we can get down there, as soon as the mud dries but you know, we've got some inclement weather coming and the bleachers that are still up on the track will be moved around, we'll put some down on the baseball fields and return the ones to Millville Elementary School. Somebody said that Millville Elementary School was gonna look into starting up a T-ball league again so hopefully they redo that field and.
So will the tracks, we just talked about how the track is a popular sport this year so are bleachers staying up there?
Some of them stay up there, not all.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I don't think any spectators go on the actual, we have in the last couple of years.
Bleachers?
Everyone stood around the outside to watch.
Yeah, I normally be on the outside, yeah.
Oh, I used to, we used to sit on.
Along the fence.
I think we used to be on the inside of the land.
And you can't stand on the track because of the lane usage.
And I guess the AD's looking into getting more porta-potties delivered from whoever, ADC or somebody else. For the facilities report.
Any questions for Scott?
Thank you Scott.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a few use of facilities.
Oh boy.
We have the rise up initiative.
That's not fast.
Yes, equally.
Is that Easter, the day before Easter?
Yes, we're gonna be doing meals then and from 10 to 3, we'll start getting things packed up and then we'll, they'll do a grab, what is it, grab and go, drive by pickup? Drive through pickup?
That sounds much better.
Yes, sorry.
So everything on these have been vetted through the calendar system?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh yes, yeah, and then the last one is the candidate form for, I believe it's Blackstone, right? Yes.
That's tonight?
March 22nd.
How much?
Next, no, two weeks from now, yes.
High school of 20?
High school of 20.
That's it.
Water owns the candidates.
We want in the middle too from Paxton, right?
All right, so looking for a motion for the use of facilities request, it looks like we have three.
Motion over.
Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Tara, all those in favor for the facilities request, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And then it looks like surplus item?
Yes, we have, in your packet you have a list of technology surplus that needs to be approved by the committee for disposal. Before we can get rid of it.
And they can't be reused anywhere?
I was just gonna say, I've never seen an iPad on and it's actually like, is it, are we not?
Oh, yeah, you know what, they left the number.
I was like, oh.
But you know what, it might be here, let me.
Does anyone need a PC?
Let me see if I can find it because they just shared.
But for the amount of iPads we bought before we got into Chromebooks, we've never disposed of any.
Let me see if I can get you that number, bear with me one minute.
Is there a number?
Yeah, there might be, let me just look and see if, this is like a running list with the tech team that they share with me, so let me see if I have it here.
Because they do eventually stop working.
Yeah, they can't, I, we just actually had our tech team meeting yesterday and they can't, they literally can't use them for anything, like you can't even, you can't operate their, update their operating system.
You can't go up on the iOS?
No. So let me, here, here we go.
I can see.
What is that number, come on now.
Keep my glasses on.
68.
Oh wow.
That number should be 68, the iPads.
All right, so a motion to approve the surplus item, technology items as printed.
Second.
Second made by Tammy, second by Tara, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you.
That's the facilities.
Did we really get through this?
We did.
All right, and last up before we move into executive session, we have school committee forum, who would like to start? Someone must have something. I saw the, I think you shared it Tammy, the BME PTO is in desperate search of officers for next year so parents out there looking to volunteer their time, please reach out. I think you had shared that.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's important to know that if, if more people help out, the time commitment lessens so I keep seeing, well I don't have time for that, it's literally if you can give an hour, they will appreciate an hour.
Right, and it helps the other parents that are giving that hour and, and I mean, let's all face it, we know that that stuff can't go away for the kids so.
But, but they have to understand that it will go away, if they cannot get a board of five people to commit once a month to a meeting, it will go away. I know they have, it sounded like, I read it, there's one person who's willing to be an officer, so it will go away and there's only two more meetings for people to go to to be able to become officers so.
Are there parent, are there meetings in person or do we know?
They do both.
We did both, okay.
And it's as accommodating as you can be. Sorry, I've been a little aggravated with the situation this week.
That reaches the right people, that's for the elementary school, that's one for all grades so pre-K through five, many, many parents out there can pitch in, if you have younger kids, you can be in it to win it for the long run, those are the good ones to recruit. We need you, I mean that's where we all started.
Tara's like a 42 member, 42-year member of PTO.
No joke either.
I think you may want to also point out too that I think they may still be looking for a baseball coach.
Oh really?
Like varsity boys?
I don't know if it's varsity or JV but I do know there is an opening for a baseball coach.
Okay, when do the sports start, you said something about the?
So.
20th. The 20th.
March 20th?
Yep, first softball game is March 31st.
Oh wow, no, wow.
Yeah, we're moving.
Okay.
Seems wicked early. And that's our official game, that's not a scrimmage.
So not to put you on the spot but we didn't have our student reps tonight and I know you had your, you came from the banquet so.
We had the girls.
Do you want to share how the girls entered this season?
The girls, we had the girls' basketball banquet, it was for middle school JV and varsity teams.
Oh nice.
Middle school team was one game shy of finishing 500, the JV team finished their season at 10-2 and varsity was also one game shy of finishing 500 which would have qualified them for the state playoffs. It was, it was a great night. All the players got their certificates and awards and we now have a new charger award that all of the teams gave out to kind of the player that kind of exemplifies what it means to be a charger.
One per team?
One per team.
Oh nice. Is that picked from the coaches?
The coaches, yes, we found out the new varsity captains moving into next year so season ended and they're already looking ahead to summer ball so.
Very nice to hear. All right, does anyone else have a committee item? All right, so we will be motioning to move into executive session, not to return for, we'll adjourn from our executive session, so I need a roll call, Ted?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Erin, yes, Tammy?
Oh sorry, yes, I thought you did yourself last.
Tara?
Yes.
I probably could have, I just, I don't go in order, I might forget. All right, so we will move into executive session.